They're muted, maybe we can't hear them. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ashland Planning Board meeting of Thursday.
Recording in progress.
January ninth. I will call the meeting to order at seven eighteen, and please know that that meeting is being broadcast and recorded. First item on our agenda this evening is the Clerk's Report. Kate, that is you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have received one correspondence since the last Planning Board meeting. That was the resignation of Design Review Member, Kep.
Okay. Great, thank you. And we will be looking probably, you know, diving into more of that in another meeting, filling, trying to fill on Design Review openings. Next on the agenda is Public Comment. So this is always a time for general public comment. If there's comments specifically related to an item on the agenda, we would ask that you wait until we discuss that agenda item. But we will take public comment at this time. Mark, Sony?
Okay, thank you. Mark Sony, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. I know it's not on the agenda, and I really don't want to rehash a little bit, but Tuesday night's meeting was not exactly great to talk about with the Main Street project, but it kind of was not here to in the fairness of everything and everybody was just everybody else talking about what it is and not having really the citizens enough time to participate, but the citizens did come out, did say stuff. I was hoping there's gonna be a lot more. Neither here nor there for that. To the Mr. Peter, let me check, through the chair, to him. Do you, I sent a building comprehensive package out a couple of weeks ago. It's from the, from the mass builders, I think it is, about comprehensive plan and the building structures. I still got it on my computer, but I don't want to lose this connection I have here. I sent it out to you, the town manager and our economic director. It's about, about building frameworks and the economic procedures that can go with it with down the road in the future. And that was gonna be working with the the mill building, what is inside there or could be. My idea is that it kind of should work together. It's a long, it's a long thing, but I wanted to put it out there. I wanted to come in and talk to everybody about it, but there's been pushback and no response from anybody, so I think it's out there. So that's about it for that. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Mark. Next on our agenda is the public hearing for special permit. This is for the Ashland Dog Park. If we remember, well, we will also be continuing the public hearing for the site plan review part of the dog park. But first of all, we're opening the public hearing for the special permit. Peter, did you want to read that in, or do you want me to read it in?
I'm happy to read it.
Okay.
So I can say the Planning Board will hear the petition of the Town of Ashland requesting a special permit per Chapter two eighty-two, Section five point eight, Site Alteration Special Permit, the national bylaws. The application is proposing to develop a dog park. The dog park will be divided into two areas dependent on the dog's type. A sixteen thousand square foot large, excuse me, a sixteen thousand square foot larger dogs park in a two thousand five hundred square foot area for smaller dogs. Both areas will be properly divided by with chain link fencing. Chain link fencing will be surrounding the two areas with an appropriate entrance. Site plantings will be installed according to the proposed landscaping plan. The site will include a sixteen car paved parking area and infiltration basin with stormwater controls. The total area of the development will be one acre, one point four seven acres. It will provide community of Ashland an additional recreational space for residents and pets. The property in question is located at zero MBTA, MBTA access road, which is now known as Memorial Drive. And the assessor's map is thirteen, lot one thirty-eight. Location is within the rail transit zoning district. With that said, all data, all information inquiries could be sent to Peter and myself, Planning Director, and all material will be viewed online. I will hand it back to you.
Okay, so we're opening that public hearing, and I think we can, is it appropriate, Peter, that I can basically continue the public hearing for the site plan review at the same time?
Correct. We'll reopen the site plan review, and then both will be open at the same time.
Okay, so we're both open, because we're usually doing these things obviously simultaneously. Okay. So we're kind of taking four and five together. So when we met on December nineteenth, there were, there was a little bit of confusion about several parts of the documentation we had in front of us. One of them was the rice stone versus the gravel. I think that has been clarified both in the Design Review comments, revised document. And the other one was the date on the drawings, which needed to be prior to the Conservation Commission date meeting, because they approved those drawings at, at that meeting. So
That is correct.
Did I say that correctly?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. So those items have been corrected. Peter, what was the, what was the correction you sent out today? You sent out new?
Oh, yesterday, I, so just to make note, I did, I did send the decision. Well, I was revising the decision, and it came out that I had the wrong date for, on the plans for, I don't know, for the the third pages, C one hundred, C two hundred, and C three hundred on the decision. And I just updated those dates. That was pointed out by Michael Radner. I do want to please note that Assistant Town Manager Jen Balls on the call, and Michael Radner. Michael Radner is the the designer of the park, and Michael Radner was the one that has provided us with these plans that we have here tonight. So if there are any questions, I know Michael and Jen were on the call on the nineteenth. However, both are here to help answer any questions.
Okay, yeah, and I would just ask them, as well as Yolanda, who I also see is on the call, that if there's in the, in the interest of being efficient with our process tonight, if there's anything that you, hearing that seems inaccurate, or feels that you need more of an explanation, please just raise your hand so that we can address it right away. So I think the I think the task tonight is to just go through any corrections we have or modifications on both the site permit approve, special permit approval and the site plan review approval. I believe Peter sent out, in the case of the special permit, he sent out only the beginning part of that and not all the conditions at the end, so that they would be put on. If we wanted to make any corrections in the conditions, we would make them on one document and copy them exactly onto the other document, as we've done before on some other projects. So most of what is shown on the special permit is just the things that are different between the two documents. So we would want to go through those. If there's any changes in the criteria that people wanted to make, and if there's any conditions, particularly special conditions that we wanted to add. So a special permit comes first on the list. Why don't we start there with the special permit document?
Tricia, do you think it makes sense to ask if, does anybody have any questions on the, the most recent site plan? Because I know Michael's here, and maybe a good time just to, to look at the, the site plan that was submitted.
Sure, we can, we can ask that first, if anyone has any questions before we actually go into the document.
Okay, seeing no hands, we'll go into the document. Oh, well, man, I'm gonna pull, I was ready to pull up that, so we can go with the special permit.
Yeah, so I am on the special permit. And I am at the point where the facts and findings. So if anyone has anything before the facts and findings on the special permit, which I believe would be also the same list that's on the site plan review, just let me know and we'll back up further.
I do, just because on the cover, I, it seems like, did you start saying we're going to continue both of these tonight, or are we voting?
No, I was, I was saying that the, I was opening the continued public hearing for the site plan review. So so one of them is new and one of them is continued from last time, but we're talking about them basically all together as we typically would for a site plan review slash special permit. Does that make sense?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Um, I just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, like, the notice part, because like, one was noticed later, that so when you repub, when it got republished on December thirtieth, that also was like republishing for the special, special permit, not just the site plan?
No, we were only republishing for the special permit. We were only posting for the special permit, which had not been out there.
Okay, so the, that's what I, on the third, one, two, three, fourth paragraph on the very first page,
Okay.
it might, it might say that and just be confusing the way I read it, because that's why I got confused.
Oh, so you're saying the public hearing.
Well, so the, the continuances weren't published for December thirtieth, nor was the public hearing for this part. I, it might be just the way I'm reading it, but it
Oh, well, because this one, if yeah, so that's always in there.
Tonight, there's no continuances.
Right, but it's also didn't get published on December thirtieth for the special permit, is what Trish just said. But it might be just the way I'm reading it. I'm a little confused, that's all. And I don't think it's a big deal, but we just have to get that right.
Yeah, I'm not sure when they got published. I did, I was making a comment on that.
Notice in the paper was December thirty.
Okay.
But for the, for the special permit, because you originally, I asked, and you said, no, it was for the site plan, and we're on the special permit right now.
Correct. The site plan is gonna have different dates.
Yeah, so Pete, I think what, I think what Kate's just saying is just remove continuances, because you didn't, you didn't the public hearing wasn't noticed in those two dates. The continuances happened as a separate part. And so those two dates won't add, like, if they looked at the legal ad, it wouldn't have said anything about the site plan. So I think if we just remove that.
Yeah, okay.
But so the December thirtieth said, I'm, I'm noticing you for the special permit and site plan, or only?
Just the special permit.
Okay.
The special permit notice happened.
Now, that's okay, I had it backwards. That's what, yep.
Okay. But I think it was Jen was correct. If we just say the public hearing was held per se and to the notice published in, and obviously tonight is the public hearing for the special permit.
And if we did continue the special permit tonight, we would want that phrase back in there.
Yes.
Correct. Hundred percent.
Okay. All right, so so now let me know if there's anything else on the documents of record page up until facts and findings. Does anyone have anything that they need to review on that?
And Michael, please jump in. You are co-host. You concur with these dates.
That's correct. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Yep, looks good. Thank you.
I mean, this might be a little picky, but on the Design Review comments, it's I, it just has December thirteenth and then December nineteenth, and the other ones have like the year. So I feel like it should just probably be consistent.
Does that work for you, Kate?
Yep.
Okay, jumping down to facts and findings.
So the first, obviously, the location and use is just the location, use is basically out of the, the listing. We added point C there to explain what the special permit, why there was a special permit for this project. And then sustainability was just our, what we typically put typically put in an approval to explain that, that, that part of what we do according to our checklist. And then it just goes into the criteria for a special permit. Do people want to go through these one by one? I can read them off, or has everyone had a chance to read them on our own, and that would be redundant?
I read them when, when, when they were sent, so I'm, I'm good.
I'm good as well.
Kate and Amanda, do you have any changes or anything you want to look at more closely?
Nope, I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. So so in that case, we kind of leave them the, the, the front information of the special permit. Let's go over to the front information of the site plan review document. And that then also has the conditions listed, which will be the same conditions for both projects.
All right, here we go.
Right, so so there's that same public hearing and continuances line, which is, are different than the site plan, than the special permit document. And then as we go into the documents of record.
Can we go in that first? So the, it's like the second sentence in the last paragraph of the first page. I don't recall us closing the public hearing at our meetings, because I thought in fact, we probably couldn't have, because we were asking questions. So I think I'm probably right. It's oh, I must be looking at an old one, because it's
I just, yeah, I just changed it.
Okay.
That was just, yep.
Because I was like no, I am looking at the, okay, so you changed it since you sent that, because I was like, all right, good.
And then we need to change that letter I again. No, I think it's still coming.
Yep.
At the bottom.
But the Design Review comments submitted to Planning Board third or thirteenth. The G one says the comments are submitted to Planning Board on third, and does this mean that thirteenth, the applicant submitted response, is that what the date is?
The original, I think the original, isn't there an original date on the document as December thirteenth, or is that the you're still talking about the Design Review comment?
Yeah, the one on G and I have December three and December thirteenth.
So Design Review comment submitted to the Planning Board on, on December third. And then the applicant response he has for December thirteenth and revised on December nineteenth.
So the original date is that the correct language there?
December, it was December third.
So that says third, but the I one says December thirteenth. So the review comments came in on December third, but the applicant submitted responses on thirteenth. Is that how this should be read?
Correct.
Right, right.
So what's the original date referring to?
The date that the Design Review Committee gave us their original document versus the original date of the response was the thirteenth, and then they revised the response on the nineteenth. You, you, you have an extra ED in there that you're trying to get rid of there, Peter. You have two EDs. There you go.
It's a long week.
Does that answer your question, Deepa?
Yeah, I wonder if you need that original date, that phrase at all there.
Oh, just take out.
It's just confusing.
So just take out on I, original date?
Yeah, just those two. I don't know if anybody else thought.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. If you, if you think it's clear, it's fine with me.
Take out original date?
Like, they might, you might keep a date, I guess.
Yeah, I say holding a date.
Yeah. But maybe original.
You may want to copy this on the other page as well.
I'll, I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so then this we didn't, we originally didn't have, and I'm not sure, so should the, should the line about the special permit, I guess, should be included on both documents, that you can see how they're related? Does that make sense? I guess it makes sense. Because you always need the site plan review. You don't always need a special permit.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. I think that makes sense to have it in both places. All right, then these are the criteria. I cannot remember if we went through some of these in the last meeting.
I don't think so, but we had them to read. But on one, the last sentence, the Ashland Conservation Commission on December ninth approved an order of conditions for the proposed project. So we probably should put the year, but do we, should we also refer to that in one of the documents? Or is that just sort of like, I'm, I'm telling you what happened? I, I don't, I don't know that I care, I just that we mention it one way or another. Because it, to me, it seems a little odd a document shows up here not in the document list, but I'm not sure it matters. So the documents of record, maybe it should be there, maybe not.
We would, I would say we normally wouldn't put the conservation unless it was, you know. But I think what we're doing was we're telling the story, we're stating the fact.
Okay. That's fine.
My one comment in here is that under item four, just to have a note that this is where we mentioned about the tree caliper of less than four inches. Actually, I think we, maybe we did go through this, because I think Kate changed that wording to make, to make it read better.
Yes, less than four inches.
Yeah, caliper of less than four inches can be removed, and which is also, it's also a part of the demolition landscape drawing, is it? I don't remember what it's, demolition civil drawing?
Yes, Yolanda has her hand raised.
Oh, Yolanda, please.
So if I understand this correctly, that means any tree that is larger than four inches around has to remain?
That's just in the, that's in the area.
To put it on the site plan.
Yeah, we can, we can look on the site plan. It's not over the whole dog park. It's only
Can I, can I jump in?
Sure, please, Michael.
Yolanda, that's just the area of the trees where we're keeping the trees at the back of the
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you. Sorry, I panicked a little.
And it, and it shows on a drawing C one hundred.
Do you want me to say, shown on drawing C one hundred?
That's not a bad idea to make sure that, but I don't know that it's a hundred percent necessary.
To call it out, to write that in the condition here? Yeah, I don't think we need to, we, we haven't done that before to start calling out specific drawings.
No, the only thing is people seem to be confused about the four and greater remain and where, but I think maybe we just think in the conditions, make sure that's well spelled out. I guess if it's on the drawings, it should be fine, so.
We can take a look at it where, where it is on the drawings. I, I saw, I saw it earlier. Are you bringing those up, Peter?
Yep, I can bring them up.
Okay.
Up one, Pete.
Yep, C one hundred. Thank you, Michael. So as you can see, sorry, I'm trying to zoom in a little bit.
The note right in the middle.
Right there. So it's the whole shaded area that's remove underbrush and trees, less four inch caliper, map trees, oh, sorry. Map trees.
M and P, which is maintain and protect trees greater than four inch caliper.
Got it. Not quite large enough for me to read.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Going to stop the share and go back to the decision.
Okay.
We're back here.
So if, if everyone's had a chance to read these, and please tell me if you haven't. But if there's any other changes to the criteria, let's take a look at those. At this time, that's one through twelve of the Um, let's take a look at those at this time. That's one through twelve of the site plan review criteria. And if if not, if everyone thinks they're good, we'll look at the conditions. Okay. All right. Um, then in terms of the conditions, obviously, um, everything. Most of this is standard. Um, I did have a few, just two actually, um. Um, potential comments for special conditions. Um, and there were, there were things that we had talked about that I'm not sure are in the the drawings or documents anywhere, but please correct me if they're there and I haven't seen them. One is about the signage that um, that we had talked about the signage, I think on December fifth. And Michael had said, and Michael and Jen had both had said, yep, this is just kind of a placeholder. We will, um, they talked about um, having, doing a a fi- a review of the signage. For size, text and graphics to be determined. And so I didn't, I I didn't see that um. I didn't see that noted in the drawings, so it's probably should be a condition that the signage will just be looked at um, at a later date. So that would be under a new, putting under special project conditions. So that would be condition one.
So you want signage?
Yeah, signage and then colon. And I would say, um, final signage will be reviewed. For size, text and graphics. Before. Before implementing, prior to implementation or prior to construction?
About installation.
That's fine.
Okay, who who are we asking to review that? The planning board or? I think that probably.
Yeah, I I assume the planning board, just like this, like we had a hundred in Chestnut Street.
Uh, will be submitted for review and approval to the planning.
Sounds good. Final signage will be submitted for review. Final signage will be submitted for review and approval by the planning board.
Trish, I just wanted to just clarify one thing. Um, we were sort of talking just because the the timeframe we have to receive the Stanton grant. And obviously, the um, Dog Park Committee will be working probably on the sign a little bit. Um, we were likely. Do that as sort of a second phase, so I just didn't want people, you know, we'll probably go to bid and and start working and and sort of in parallel. Where we'll be working on the sign and the language that we'll bring back to you guys, but it won't be part of the con- we might not even do it as part of the contract, just sort of. Just in terms of timing, um, because I think, you know, we're sort of right at that end, that tail end, and we need to go to bid pretty soon. And so I just didn't want you to think, if you start to see movement, that we've sort of forgot about that piece, just aware.
Yeah, we hope to see movement. People are excited.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, and as this says, just prior, like prior to installation, um, and obviously that would make sense to have it prior to ordering. Um, uh, that should, you know, ju- should, you know, cover it.
Okay, great.
Would that be an informal review? So you're not advertising a public hearing, I would think.
I don't.
Staff review or? Design review committee review.
I don't think, we didn't need to open anything for a hundred Chestnut Street to review signage, right, Peter?
Yeah, it was just agenda item on a typical planning board meeting.
Yeah.
So, um. You know, I think, uh, obviously, I'm Michael, I've been, I think the planning board knows I've been working with you and and Jen and, uh. You know, when I was, I actually took a picture of the dog park sign. I visited down in Florida and I know Michael has pictures and examples of dog park. Uh, rules and regulations and signage, so I think we're, we have it pretty well covered.
But if you can go back to that item, Peter, um, I think we needed to add, uh, by the, to the plan, we review and approval to the planning board.
Oh, okay. By the playbook.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the second, any, any reworks of that? Sound okay? The second thing I noted, um, from December fifth was. And and we might maybe want to look at the um, the site plan is that we had talked about. Um, where the crosswalk was, um, adding and um. Potentially saving or adding in a tree or a boulder. Or other natural features where it seemed like there was more just a a grassy area. And um, I didn't know if we wanted to put that in. I know, I know more plants were added. Um, from the ti- when, from the time that original comment was made. Um, do you have that easy to bring up? It seems like it was this, it was a discussion we were having about what might go there. Um. I think, I think Kate had mentioned perhaps an extra tree, um, someone hits or or maybe or maybe maintaining more trees that were already there. Um, Marcelo then said, hey, if there's any of these boulders, that would make, they could go there, that would make it look more natural. Or if they're already existing in that location.
Let me bring up the same thing. You're asking for the same thing, correct?
And those, those are the only two things I had after kind of reviewing our December fifth um, meeting. Which is kind of where we got in depth about those things.
Correct me if I'm wrong, um, and I got a lot of things on my screen, I know, but it was in the area right where my, uh.
Yes, and there's a, there's a color, that if you know the landscape plan with color, I think it's down there a little bit. Yeah, there. There we go. Right, so, yeah, right in that area.
We, we added some large shrubs along the right side there to. Kind of give a little more buffer and and we ex- we expanded the edge, the clearing um, to the left. So there's retained more of that vegetation there.
Okay, right.
So we did, we did respond to that.
Got it. So maybe it doesn't, um. I I did note the vegetation put in there. I I didn't um, notice that the tree line had come closer. Um, this, the board, is the board happy with where it's at? I. It sounds like it's good the way it is. Marcelo?
Yeah, no, I I I think it's fine. I I think the comment that that Kate had made, as I remember it was. Uh, kind of right, right adjacent to 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 the driveway, uh, but but keeping, you know, visibility between the walkway and the driveway. Seems like a good idea.
Yeah, okay. I'm I'm good with that too. I just wanted to make those two notes that I had picked up from the earlier meeting.
Is a light plan applicable for this project?
I'm I'm sorry, Deepak.
A lighting plan?
I don't think there is any lighting.
Should there be lighting?
I think it's a daytime only facility.
So there is timing that we are defining here?
So as part of the, as part of, as part of the rule sign, just like our other open space that we have, you know, um, like Milpon Park. It'll be just, you know, it won't be open in the evening.
Okay.
And when we say open, it, I mean, there there's no gate on the drive.
No, it's just a sign that says it's closed, yeah, just like, you know, all of our other spaces.
And we have a location for the signage, because I see in your drawings, there is like a placeholder for. The signage in the drawings. Is there a location that is marked?
I defer to Michael and I don't.
Are you referring to the rules signage?
So on, um, what drawing sheet is this? This is on the last drawing page or no? So this is L six point two, yeah, the one in the eight ten top corner.
Yeah, that that is the only sign that we have.
And where is that?
At the location that Peter was just pointing at, at the entrance to the gated.
And there's gonna be no light even for that location.
Correct.
Yeah, it's gonna be right here, deeper between the two doors. For this door will be, the door here will be the smaller park, door here is the larger park, and the sign will be here right outside of the uh, the fence.
Sort of similar when you go to Milpon Park, so the rule sign is actually in the park that says it's, you know, and I think there's prob-. I think there's one at Stone Park or there was at one point, but.
So it's not about being a sign on the street directing people in. It's a sign about explaining the rules once you're there.
Correct.
Is that, is that good, Deepa?
Thank you, yeah.
All right, I think we can go back to the conditions. And that is all the notes I had on the conditions. Um. Did anyone else have anything else, changes that they would like to make? Going once, going twice? Okay. Um, if that is the case, um. That is the case, I will um, pause, just I will open it for public comment for this particular agenda item. As we have one member of the public, this is for you, well, I guess Yolanda is also a member of the public, but. All right, Mark, you have a comment?
Uh, Mark, you have been asked to unmute.
There you go, like I said. Okay. It's took a pretty good amount of time, and I was on the fence about this at the beginning. Still thinking about town DPW, the town workers and all that for the winter. But. How will this park be hourly timed? If it's daytime hours, what's the hours? And is there gonna be some sort of alarm system in case anything, everybody tries to break in? That's it.
Trish, do you want me to take that?
Yes, please.
So, um, Mark, it won't be, it won't be necessarily locked. It's gonna be like other sort of, um, I mean, there's nothing necessarily to break into. It's gonna be an open space sort of park, um, and so, um, it will be very similar to the River Walk. Or Milpon Park or Marathon Park, which has signs that say, you know, that this is only open during the daytime hours. And obviously, that changes based on the time of year. Um, and so it is a little bit self policing. The committee um, has been working with the town, um, and they will sort of help self police, um, and and in terms of. You know, making sure everybody uh, keeps the park once it's built, um, in good condition. So very similar to our other open spaces, we're, we're approaching that um, that way.
I assume, I assume it just gives, um, it just gives um, authority to the Ashland Police to ask people to leave if they're there. After sunset, say.
Yes, and yes, so if if somebody is driving by and they notice that there's, you know, several people in the park, that certainly gives them, um. You know, some authority to have a conversation about, you know, or letting them know that it's not open and then having a conversation, so.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other comments, um, I will entertain a motion um, to close. The public hearing. Can I do it at the same time, Peter?
Uh, typically would be, for this one, I think it's safe to play it as two separate motions.
Separate, we'll, we'll.
Just bring them apart.
A motion to close the um. The site plan approval, I guess, the special permit, because we're, we did that one first.
I make a motion to close the site plan approval for Zero Memorial Drive.
So we're closing the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
And a roll call vote?
Deepak and Gatai.
Marcelo, Hona, I.
Catherine, Jersey, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I. Um, so the public hearing is now closed. Is there, are there any further comments by the planning board?
Trisha, this was just for the special permit, right? Because I believe I was not at the meeting, at the second meeting for the site plan review, so.
Yes, this is just for the special permit.
Voting on that one, yes, okay.
Correct, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll explain that in a little bit.
So, yeah, so just for the special permit, um, seeing no other conversations. Um, do I have a motion regarding the special permit approval?
I make a motion that we approve the special permit approval for Zero Memorial Drive.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a roll call vote?
Deepak and Gatai.
Marcelo, Hona, I.
Catherine, Jersey, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I, oh. And I guess, uh, Amanda, you could vote on this one.
This is the only hearing with special permit open, right?
And it's a special permit which which you can vote on.
Amanda Hayes, I.
All right, so that is five. Zero zero. Um, so that is approved. Turning to the site plan approval, um, we will be looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing for the site plan review for Zero Memorial Drive.
Um, is there a second?
Second, yeah.
And a roll call vote?
Deepak and Gatai.
Catherine, Jersey, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I. So I guess it's just the three of us, right? All right, and then we will, so the public hearing is now closed. I assume there is no more comments from the board. Then we will look for a a motion for approval for the site plan. Site plan review.
I make a motion that the planning board approved site plan approval, application Zero Memorial Drive.
And a second?
Second.
And a roll call vote?
Deepak and Gatai.
Catherine, Jersey, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I, so all we need is three for that one, so that is approved and. I think we're done with the dog park, so thank you and congratulations.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, everybody.
We look forward to it.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda, oh, so, um, Peter, do you want to give? Oh.
Yeah, I'm gonna text Anna.
It sounds like a text I've, um. I don't think she's gonna be able to, um, she sent me a text that she does not think she can get the logistics to work and she'll be able to come on. Why don't you send her the text anyway, just so she knows?
Okay.
In case that has changed. Um. But next on our agenda is, um. Uh, just a general discussion, well, a little more than a, the general discussion of the accessory dwelling units. Um, basically. Uh, we have the draft regulations. The state is asking for, um, any input we have on that. Um, and those comments, unfortunately, are due tomorrow if we do have any comments. Um, on the draft regulations. Anna had sent out the documents, um, her documents. And focusing on, um, focusing on the, on five issues that the state was particularly looking for comments on. Um. I don't know how, um, where everyone is in reading this material.
Um, the, I I I read it, Trisha, but it it. My, 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 my takeaway was that, uh, Anna was suggesting that to, there's a. Um, a guideline based on what Natick is doing, or I think did, I don't know if they approved it. And Anna was making suggestions to, to modify a little bit the the posture on this and this and that. Um, what was that also for, for feedback to the state? Because it sounded more that that was more for internally for Ashland to. To, to develop the regulations.
I I actually had a call with Anna shortly before, um, just before this meeting, actually. Um, so that she could, she didn't know if she would be able to, to meet with us to, to try to make her. Documents more clear. And so I do think. And so I do think that the Natick example that she gave was just something that we later. Um, later might follow, she, in her document and her memo that she sent us. After the feedback to the state, um, she just talked about the, you know, drafting an Ashland bylaw. You know, which we'll need to do, that brings us in into compliance with the state. So I think she was looking at this, the Natick information, she was giving it to us, but she was looking at that more of, hey, in the future. When we draft, when we draft this, this is something we could look at.
Yeah, that's how, that's how I understood it.
Okay. Yeah, so that. Anna has outlined, and Peter, do you, did you have anything to add to this, because I know you had talked to me about like some of these different um. Things that the state, the questions that the state has, and you've been going to several different uh seminars and webinars about this. Did you have anything you wanted to add about?
You know, I, I think from, I, you know, I've been talking, I've been going to kind of seminars about this, you're right, and uh, I think, you know, talking to town folks, I think we're all kind of looking at it. There's some of us that look at from a, from a land use perspective, I think a lot of, some of us are looking at it from a, from a infrastructural connections issue, right? So, and then my other thing, my, my component kind of revolves around if, and, and I don't think it's been ironed out, and so. The one comment I'm gonna make to the, to the, to the regulations are, is to make sure that um. Like, the item regarding ownership, right, is kind of ironed out within the regulation. Because if you're allowed to do ADU or build ADU by right on your house, the question comes down to, are you allowed to sell that ADU, right? So in that instance, then you're having, you're having, you would have one principal structure, you would have allowable ADU. But could then the homeowner make a condo minimize each, right? And then who is responsible for the infrastructure on that site? I think that's one of the components that I think needs to be ironed out. And I think that also comes down to uh the conversation regarding infrastructure, how do you tap in, or how do you pull? The sewer in the water um from the principal structure? To an ADU that's not attached, right? I think, you know, talking to the DPW is that they would rather let um. The connection from the principal structure be extended to the EDU to limit the number of taps, right, and their cut-ins or T-cuts. That you would have on the main trunk line of a sewer going up and down the street, right? Each cut, each tab is a point of weakness, right? And so, once that sewer line is into the principal structure, I think it's the DPW standpoint to say, okay, let's extend that sewer line to the, to, to the EDU structure. Um, and limit the exposure of a, of a failure point on the roadway, right? So I think ownership kind of can come down to, okay, responsibility, um, where that, who, who owns that sewer line? Um, how's that sewer line get fixed if there's an issue? And then also water meters. I personally think, you know, in, in speaking with DPW is that um each address, right, because accessory dwelling unit is going to have its own address. Each address should have its own meter, right? And so uh for a billing standpoint, right? So I think just from a mechanical standpoint of how these are in, in um implemented, I think just, those are some of the, the comments. That I, I, I am going, I, I have, which are fairly simple, um, and, and I think more infrastructurally kind of based. Um, but I, I think my major overall comment is the regulations have to iron out ownership. And is it possible for somebody to sell a ADU that's on their, on a lot, right? Um, and if you can, what are the, I don't, what are the legal documentations that you have to put in place? Is it an easement, is a, is it a homeowners association um regarding obviously maintenance of that property? So, that, that's just one of the questions that I have, and you know, that, that I think the regulations have to clearly um state. Um, as, as we move into this, as we open this door of ADU by right.
And I would say, so if we're, if we're generating kind of um comments, like I said, we have to. Put these comments, these, these have to be sent to the state tomorrow. So Peter was looking at just a simple bullet pointed list, it's just feedback, right? It's nothing, you know, um. So, but it seems like it would just be a comment that. That ADUs should not be sellable separate from the main dwelling. I'm, and I don't, I think they should be a rental, like you didn't, it sounds like extremely complicated when you start to get into. Now is this property considered a two family, is the lot big enough to have two? Um, so I, I wouldn't want to go down that road at all, I would want to be like, that our comment should be that ADUs are not allowed to be sold separate from. Separate from the main dwelling, I, I never even considered that that would be an issue, so.
I, I agree, and, and doesn't seem possible, isn't it? Because the registry of deeds, they would have to be a separate parcel. With a deed and have to be a compliant parcel, I, I think the intent of the ADUs is to have a small structure. That is um in, 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 in its installation um. Subservient to the main structure and, 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 and that's where I, I would, I don't understand why the DPW would want to have a separate water meter or the water department. Water meter for the small structure, it seems more straightforward that all the. All, all of the utilities would be charged to the, to the address. And then the owner would have to figure out how to, you know, charge the, the renter accordingly, because. I, I, I think the. The address is the same, I guess that's, it was in Anna's memo. It's, it's kind of um, if the address is twenty one something. The, the ADO would be twenty one A, but it's the same address, so I, I wonder. For, for, for items of infrastructure or for the mail. I was thinking that this, that, that would use the same inlets that that parcel has. And even the same mailbox, so I don't know if the, if the postmaster is going to require a separate mailbox for that unit as well.
I think mail is easily, easily separated and probably should be because of privacy. But I don't know about. The water in the sewer, it certainly makes sense, the DPW's concern about. Fewer, fewer taps in.
So right now, I think I did read it, but it was a while ago, I don't think they talked about utility, so is our ask of the state. Basically to, to not make, um, to leave that to the towns, to make sure that it's, or it's silent, and then it would be left to us?
Yeah, I guess the states.
I think that's a good way to put it.
Yeah, like remain silent on utility connections, let the towns. But I think the ownership is a great catch, and I think that we, we should recommend that it's not even. I mean, to the point to condoize, you start, I don't know, maybe if that works, but that seems. Um, raising more issues, but, so we could say we, to stay as one parcel, one ownership. And then ask them to investigate the condoizing.
Yes, I wouldn't want them to investigate the.
No, well, but you'd rather them investigate and come to the decision than, than um. Become back to Ashland, I think, because we'll spend a lot of money on legal. To try to figure that out, like with the utility we want, we'll talk to the DPW, we will come up with something reasonable, but. Um, we would otherwise have to try to. Prohibit it in Ashland, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's not in there now, I guess it would just be like having a bullet point that says. Ashland does. The Ashland Planning Board does not support. Separate ownership. Of the dwellings on the property.
But we don't, but that we don't control that, so if the state makes the rule, they would, we do not control condoizing and planning board that I know of, right? That's all I'm saying, nor, nor separate.
Right, but they're just asking for feedback, they're not asking us to make a policy.
Oh, I see, I thought you were talking about when we got to Ashland in our bylaws, yes.
No, no, I, I think first things first, it's just feedback to the state.
Yeah. Perfect, yeah, I thought you were talking about us and I was like, that's gonna be a tough one.
But everyone kind of agrees, I assume, that would, they should be rental units and not, and not condos in, as an ADU. Like, to me, that defeats the whole purpose of an ADU, like, it's not intended to be a condo. So, that's a different, kind of a different animal. Okay, so that would be. One point, Peter, so the utility connections, our viewpoint would, would say that the. The state should leave that up to the communities about, about utility connections? Is that? A great sound, okay. Um, the other one, um, these are a little bit out of order, if we're going back to number one, it was pre-existing non-conformities. How are pre-existing non-conformities, how they should be addressed? And just for. Does everyone, do all the non-architects understand what a pre-existing non-conformity is in terms of? So, basically, basically, if you um. If you have a lot and your lot is undersized according to the current bylaws. Or if your house doesn't meet the current setbacks. That are under the current bylaws, perhaps your house was built earlier than those bylaws. Your house exists, but it's non-conforming. So to me, this question was about, like, how do you deal with that? Um, so non-conformities come up all the time in, in dealing with additions and things. The typical way to deal with, the typical way that town deal with non-conformities, and there are some vary, in some variation in that. Is that um as long as the addition does not increase the non-conformity. They allow it to happen, you know, so say you have an addition. And you're, you only have a twelve foot setback, but it's supposed to be fifteen. You're generally allowed to kind of continue. The line of the house, or you're allowed to build right above it, even though you're already non-conforming. So. You know, so the question would be. Do we think the, does the ADU, can they continue the non-conformity? As long as you don't make, you don't increase the non-conformity? Or no, the ADU should follow the setbacks? So even though the house may be located at twelve feet. The setback is fifteen feet, the ADU would have to be at fifteen feet. That's, I think that's the question they're asking.
I mean, I think that it, it should follow, like, obviously it's allowed, but I'm in one of those neighborhoods and, and I, I know the impact if the uh. Non-conformities can be increased, um. It very much, I mean, you can drive around with Shakem if you want to see what that would look like. Um, and I, and there are other neighborhoods in Ashland, um, so there's lots that could have an ADU without increasing. That, so my, I guess the general position is I believe the non-conforming should be able to have it, and I think by the state law they are, or is that when they're saying they're still batting around? But they should not, it should have to be.
I think that, that, that state. I think I read that in, in, the, the. The independent structure, if it's independent, should conform to the zoning.
Yes, that, that would.
That, that straightforwardly suggests that. You cannot build your ADU. And kind of grandfather the non-conformity of setback that your house may have, in other words. You need to be able to place it in, in, in accordance to the zoning setbacks.
Yeah, so. Right, so is the question overall, a non-conforming lot is allowed, but it has to meet the setbacks?
That's. That, that's what I would, I think that's the, I guess I think that's kind of the safer way to go right now. Um, that yes, the ADU is allowed on a non-conforming lot. But it needs to meet the setbacks. Um, that seems to me, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of safe and. Um, in speaking for Anna, I think in, in her texts, like, she's looking at, like, maybe more maximizing housing. Um, and so maybe she would. Be a, a little bit on the other side of that, like wanting to stay that they could just not increase the non-conformity. But um I, I feel a little bit more like testing the waters first. Especially maybe in small neighborhoods where those. You know, those, that, that, those side, that's um setbacks aren't big to begin with, you know?
I, I agree, and, and I would say that. The, the beginning, the, the point of departure should be a little bit on the conservative side, uh, because otherwise you would see like, I, I don't know exactly, I'm not fully aware of, of Kate's neighborhood, but. From what Kate's saying, that, if, if you start kind of getting loose on, on, on the minimums. I think a lot of neighborhoods would likely get, you know, destroyed or, or completely uh ruined by, by, by a full array of non-conforming structures. I don't think that would be positive for anybody.
I mean, what do you think, Kate, you, does that, does that align with what you were talking about?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think, I mean, I like the ADU and I, I'm glad that the state. Just did it because we had talked about changing ours, but we, we were conservative as well, so it forces us. So I think it gives the ability and it does, obviously with a non-conforming lot has less chances, it might not, but that. You know, that's sort of um, I think to be buyer beware on that at some point. But I think. I mean, just thinking about my neighborhood, there's still lots of places that could easily have one, but not. In their backyard, and I think they'd meet the setbacks and it would be small, right?
Right, so they wouldn't encroach on their neighbors anymore.
Right.
Um, then they're allowed to even put an addition on, but.
Yeah, instead of a pool, they put an ADU, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So, Peter, do you kind of, so that would be, so in terms of non-conformities, we would be looking at suggesting that.
I think it's to follow the zoning, the zoning, the existing zoning setback.
Yeah, that, that um, a non-conforming lot is eligible for an ADU, but needs to follow. Needs to follow the, the zoning for, for setbacks.
Yeah, and then I think the second step the state's saying is also, is a non-conforming structure, right? And so. And I think in this essence, in this tone, is that, is that the state is saying, these are allowed by right, right? No special permits. However, if you do an addition, right, on a, and you're extending the pre-existing non-conformity of a structure, right? Then you're looking at a special permit. And so when you extend the pre-existing non-conformity of a structure. And, and say this is a house is trying to build an EDU as an addition. Should that follow the special permit criteria of an extension of a pre-existing non-conforming structure?
Yeah, but it is usually a special permit, that's right. Yeah.
Okay. And I think. That's the approach I, I'm hearing, is that we should, if you are extending a pre-existing non-conforming structure. And then that's going to trigger a special permit.
Right.
Which should be heard by the town, there should be a public hearing, which will go to the zoning board of appeals. Um, and then move through that typical forty eight process that the forty, that, that the zoning board. Obviously kind of takes care, take, takes. Is, is, is that what everyone, is that what I'm hearing from?
I do feel like that's a way to get around zoning for an addition. Um, so I, there must be a way to be tighter about that. You know?
Yeah, I mean, it can be the same, it can be just that you have to meet the. You know, no matter what kind of ADU you're putting on. Whether it's attached to the house or not attached to the house, you have to meet.
Yeah, I don't understand why we wouldn't, you know, as a base, like, our, our zoning's pretty clear. We, we don't ask for forty foot setbacks, we have. So I think the give is, yes, please build one on your non-conforming lot if you can fit it into our regular zoning. But I feel, I feel like the. I, well, I just know what can happen, I, I, I got an addition that I wouldn't have been able to have. And, and it won't be enforceable, right, by anyone, because you're not gonna go in their house and see who's living there. And if there's two mailboxes.
So you're saying to, to keep it conservative?
Yeah.
So there is no, you don't need, there is no going to. Um, a special permit process, it's just that you would suggest it has to be within the setbacks.
Yeah, so we, we, we're giving a lot plenty, and I think we should on, you're allowing the non-conforming lot.
Okay, but then, but then this, just thinking about it, then this triggers um. Uh, some gray zone, because let's say that you have your house, you're not building an ADU, but you're building a, a new family room. And it's non-conforming structure. Would you go to, you, you would go through a special permit and, and, and most likely you'd say, you know what, I'm not making it worse, but, but, but I have to follow the lines of the house because it's the living room. So how do you differentiate then, if somebody says, yeah, I, I am building. Uh, a, a living room, and on top of it, there's an ADU. And, and they're both going to be within the same, you know, envelope.
I mean, I, I, if you lived in my neighborhood, you'd be. I mean, I, I, if you lived in my neighborhood, you'd be pretty sensitive about it, is all I can say, without, without saying too much more, because. I can take your tour and show you.
But that could happen, I think, I think it's, it's tricky because, because I think in principle, yeah. Uh, the ADU should follow the zoning setbacks, and I think that's how the state originally stated it. But the, the tricky part is when it's not an independent structure, but an, an attached ADU. And then your house is non-conforming, so then, then you, you end up getting neighborhoods, maybe like, like, like yours, I, I, well, based on what you're saying. That people are, are going to start really. You know, putting all kinds of structures and, and completely redefine the profile of the street, I, I don't know.
So if, if you have one of those um, houses on that non-conforming lot and build, you can always, you can typically always go up and get what you want, right? Without encroaching upon, agreed upon, um, setbacks.
Yeah, if you, if you're not adding it, if you're just going up, yes.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, when people have a way, I don't, I don't think we should restrict people a way of doing it, but I think there are ways, so. If you, if you open the door, that leads to ways that people could get something next to them that they were not planning on.
Yeah. I agree, that, I mean, that's, that was my concern.
I think we can take the conservative approach again, it's, this, these are just comments to the state, they're not. You know, not regulations for Ashland at this point, so. Okay, so that was non-conforming, um. Next question from the state was dimensional standards, how to apply standards to enable ADU construction? I'm not even sure. I'm not even sure what they.
What that means, because isn't it national standards, nine hundred square feet or half this, the footprint of the house, which are smaller?
Internal standards. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not really sure what.
Isn't that referring to, to the setbacks?
I, I think so.
I think that's referring to the set, in my, the way I interpreted that, that's referring to the setbacks.
And height, building height, things like that.
Setbacks, building height, I think. Obviously, right now, should there be a building height on accessory dwelling, right? You know, and, and should we kind of put it in the regulations, should it be in the regulations, I mean? I think that's what it comes down to.
I guess in all these questions, all these questions, there's about, um. You know, you can take the question either, hey, I want the state to decide, or I want Ashland to decide, right? Or it can be giving actual real feedback, like how we think the regulation should be for everybody. Right, for all towns, you know, type of thing, which is. I think kind of what we're doing with um, with the non-conforming, non-conforming and giving actual advice. It's more like, hey, we kind of think everyone should do this, this way. But with the sewer connection, it's like, doesn't really have a visual impact, so maybe, maybe the towns can just decide. For themselves how they want the sewer in the water, you know, to work. Did, do you guys know what I'm saying, like how there's kind of two different systems here? So I think in Anna's comment, she talks about it just being the standards being under local control. Which they are, you know, if you're, if you're saying that, hey, it just has to. It has to meet the setbacks, well, we control the setbacks, you know, so. The other two questions are about. Uh, one is the addresses, I. I really have no strong opinion about how they're. About how they're labeled.
Matters about the addresses for the purposes of mail.
Yeah, yes, the post office, can we say Ashland, Ashland recommends you talk to the post office?
Yeah, I, to me, it, it, yeah, really, it really doesn't matter, I don't, I don't care.
I think that one, Doug, the building commissioner, was kind of talking that one through from a building standpoint, addressing.
But, however, but I don't know, Peter, what, what, I, I don't know if, I, I don't remember if it's already in the state bylaws, but how about curb cuts? Uh, if we're going to require parking. Uh, tha- then. How, how, how strict is going to be the requirement for, let, let's say that the. The unit is kind of on the side of the house, but they don't want to share the driveway, they want to put a new driveway for that. Maybe you. Then you, i- if, if. If that is not regulated, then, then you end up with um. Number of curb, curb cuts everywhere. That could be, that could be complicated for, for a street, you know, the sidewalks and whatever. Whereas if the curb cut is the original one for the house. And they have to put a kind of a parking spot, kind of internal to the property, then that's a different story.
So really, it should be a shared, it should be a shared curb cut, a shared driveway, um, with the principal structure.
That, that would be my preference, if, from the urban planning point of view, I think.
I agree with you a hundred, I agree with you a hundred percent, and I think also it makes sense, especially if you're, well, I know in Ashland, if you have a scenic way, you're on scenic road. You're only allowed one curb type. You know, and, and because you're trying to obviously cut down on, yes, what you just highlighted, uh, myself. Um, but that can be, that can be a good, that's a great, um. Point.
Yeah, I think it is, and it doesn't fit under anything else that I even, I don't see them even commenting on it in the regulations. So.
The, um, is there any reason to talk to the uh, public service, um, police and fire about the address? Like if they have something they prefer that's helpful to guide? I don't know, I mean, I'm just. Wondering if they have any, if we should ask them at least.
Yeah, about nine-one-one calls, things like that, like how do you know it's in the main residence or in the. Accessory dwelling unit, you know, it's just some way immediate, I guess this with, with this. Like keeping something simple.
Yeah, like A is sort of A accessory maybe, but I, I mean, I just maybe. Maybe they like two, and then it has to go to one and two for mail, I mean, I don't know, but it might be worth asking if there's something that's helpful.
Well, and it's not like we have to get, have all the answers, we could just note that.
Oh, are, are there any public safety concerns to address?
Yeah, addressing of accessories.
That's true.
You know, they, it should address public and safety concerns, emergency, um.
Location, yeah.
Yeah, location. So.
Really emergency response.
Yeah, emergency response is the most important thing, maybe.
Yep.
And then the other one was fee and charges, application and calculation of impact fee, fees and utility connection charges. So apparently, wondering, I think the question was, um. See if I still have this up online, I don't know if I do. Oh wait, no. It was about um, that towns can charge some kind of fees, are you aware of that, Peter?
So, but we typically don't, I, I mean, we do charge obviously connection fees. Um, you know, connection fees from our, from our DPW, uh, DPW standpoint. I think, you know, I think if we, in that typically is, is, is. Is factored in on, if it's a meter is involved, right, a new meter, a new panel from electrical standpoint. Um, and I think, the, the answer is yes, right, if you're going to expand. The, the, the usage of that house, if you're going to add a meter. The DPW, there's going to be inspection X, Y, and Z that needs to be plugged in, and or kind of planned for, so. I think from a DPW standpoint, uh, some of the fees, yes, would have to be kind of charged for the development of the EDU.
So I guess the. I guess maybe the bottom line is Ashland should, each town should be able to set their own fees, you know, saying relative to the. You know, what's, you know, a fee in. You know, Sherburne might be different than a fee in Ashland, let's say.
Yeah, and, and I think the biggest thing is obviously making sure they're not exorbitant, right, they're not, they're not making a negative.
Primitive, yeah.
Correct, they're not, uh, they're not, obviously negatively affecting it, one's access to develop the EDU. Uh, that's my take, when I kind of, when I read that, that. That one line, and that one bullet point on, on the town, on, on the state letter.
And is there anything else we? We want to add to that, I mean, to the. That jumped out at anyone with the feedback? And we're kind of looking at, like, that Peter's going to. Have to put together a little, a bullet list that maybe he can send out in the morning for any. Corrections or tweaks on it, but. I think that's the only thing we can get out there, because it has to be submitted before probably end of the day tomorrow, right, Peter?
I asked me to submit it, and, and, and trust me, I heard it from a lot of people, the timing of this was not the best, obviously.
Yeah.
The, uh, I think the state issued everything on December tenth, and then there was two weeks of, of, of some, some webinars. Um, and then obviously the Christmas holiday, the, the Christmas, the New Year's, the, you know, the holidays were here, right? And then obviously walking back into it, uh, last week, I know a lot of people had off, and then, uh. And then this week the comments were due, so I think we've done our best, and, and I think a lot of the comments that I'm hearing. These are a lot of the questions that have kind of been coming up, um, I know our building commissioner Doug went to the Metro West Building, uh. Building Commissioners Meeting, um, and folks from the state were there as well, right, and I think they're still ironing out some of these matters. Um, from a building code standpoint, um, from a, from a, and from a fire protection standpoint. Right, if this is a separate site, if this, if this EDU is a separate structure. Um, what is, is there, does there need to be a fire barrier? Um, and, and how does that kind of get worked in, I think those are outside of the lines of zoning, um, and what we kind of look into, but. Um, from a planning perspective, I think we've, we've done a pretty good job.
So Peter, is this something that you can bullet point? Quickly in the morning or whatever and send out, and then just, uh. Anyone who has, you know, all I can say is that try to check your email and have a few minutes to look it over, and then. Maybe Peter and I in the afternoon can. Take all the comments, if any, and just summarize them as a way to. You know, just making sure the language of the bullet points, not beefing anything up, is clear before sending it in, I think that's. If, or if anyone else wants that job, I'm happy to hand it over, but I assume everyone's. Kind of busy, except Amanda, she doesn't have anything to do.
No, thank you, I think it'd be great, I think, um, like, Anna got us a little bit focused in Peter's feedback, and, um. It sounds like a pretty good list, uh, I mean. I guess I'll be honest, if I had more time to think about it, there might have been more, but I think it's adequate to, um. Show that we're engaged in thinking about it.
Okay. But we will be looking at sending something out in case. You know, we worded it, you know, um, wrong, so. I'll just keep an eye out, if even if people can give it a glance, that would be great. Um, okay, so anything more on that topic, obviously we'll be revisiting EDUs in a big way when it comes to actually writing. Rewriting our own bylaw, but. Okay, then.
And we just, um, before we just move on, like, I think Anna put a timeline that, I mean. I think is probably a little aggressive, but I think we should try to set a timeline in the next steps, um. So what will happen is either we get busy with something else or it falls off the plate.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, um, if, if there's someone who's willing to spearhead this effort. Then that's one thing, otherwise we'll be waiting until the actual. Regulations come out, I think Anna said that she might be willing to, to work on it, um, but she's not here, I don't want to actually just sign her up.
So, um. Is we, did we have a draft that Lisa Mead had, sort of, can we get that to kind of see how that lines up with Natick? And I've been looking at, you know, just some other.
Yeah, I have a, I have a, I have a kind of a simple.
Yeah.
Draft, I think we ha, I have one, I can send that out, I can circulate that.
So she marked up ours, or we, or is the plan to just completely say I deleted the existing, I mean, it might be easier instead of trying to. Get, I, I, we, we should try to make simple, right?
Yeah, number one, I know this, Kate, is that the state is going to give us a sample bylaw. Right, the state is going to provide all towns a sample bylaw, and I think it's for us then to go from there, so. I think these regulations, this law does go into effect February second, so they are going to, in, in my, I, I. From what, what I understand is they're going to turn these regulations around fairly quickly to allow towns to, um, to maneuver, right?
Yeah.
And I don't think anyone's going to call a special town meeting for this, but at least to give everybody the wings of the rope, right? So, um, however, there was, there was a couple of towns that preemptively jumped.
Yeah.
Uh, jumped into the pool per se, and, and made some changes to their bylaws, and, and I think I have a couple, I have an example of those. And, and so I can, I can send those out, um, but I think with the regulations being, they're going to be turned around fairly quickly. Uh, and, and I do know the state's going to provide a, a sample bylaw.
Okay, that's cool, so I, I mean, just off the top of my head is that we should probably strike ours and, and replace, I think it's going to be simpler. Than trying to find it, and then I like Anna's things about, um, kind of trying to get some of the other boards though. Weighing in, so if we. If some of those things maybe aren't under the planning board purview, but it's, you know, eighty percent design, but we never talked about the curb cuts or sewer. Like, how, how does that, does that have to be part of the bylaw, or do we have to ask the select board to do regulations? You know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to, um, ignore it, even if it's not entirely under our purview. Um, to get those things parallel coming along.
I, just to answer that, I think we're, we're all going to have to kind of work together on.
Yeah.
I think the DPWs, you know, we're going to have to reach out to the DPW, we're going to ask them, you know, what their thoughts are. Um, and we can obviously reach out to the zoning board, regardless of increases, non-conformity, whatever the regulations are, right?
Yeah.
Make sure we kind of nail those down, and, um, and also kind of question, you know, the fire department and the building department, I think, uh. I think it's going to be a team effort to obviously make the best bylaw, um, but I think the biggest thing is to kind of. For us to put up the, put in these recommend, I mean, these, these comments and, and see what the state comes back with.
Yeah, so, um, so we'll put in the, the comments, and then. You know, I guess you said Doug is working on this, and DPW is obviously aware. So, um. I, I think that, I guess it's just making sure the select board is also aware, do you know if they are as well?
I believe so, I think they are aware of, uh, what this is, I think, obviously, MBTA was the big lift running into, obviously, November.
Yeah.
And then Christmas came, so I think, uh, they are aware, uh, I'll double check with Michael and Jen to make sure, you know. It may be a joint meeting that we have to meet again and go over the stuff.
Yeah, because it might be, it might be hard for them to comment on these kind of zoning things, um. You know, and to understand how it, how it kind of affects their bigger picture, um. If we don't have a document in front of us specifically, you know, um.
Yeah, I do know that, obviously, I think, you know, Michael and, Michael and Michael Herbert, Tom Manager, Joe Boss, or some Tom Manager, they are aware. Right, um, you know, I, I know I did, you know, we do talk about this in staff meetings, and. And so, so to that knowledge, I think, uh, everybody understands, and, and, and obviously it is in news. And it's in, it's been obviously well, uh, published.
Okay, well, maybe we have to wait till next meeting and just see, you know, like I said, who, who is able, willing to. Um, put in some time, you know, on, on the by, on this ADU bylaw, um. And then that group can determine, you know, try to gather information and, and. Um, the best of it's probably two people. Um, don't want to go three, because then you have a public, you know, a public body, but to start to, uh, to put, to put that together. It works, it worked good with the MBTA, to have just a small group, or even just two, two people working with Peter and Elvera, or whatever. Um, would get the job faster than, get the job done faster than talking about it in the planning board every, every week, so. Anyway, that's my, my take on it. So maybe gather some more examples if you see them, and, um. Then we'll have it on the agenda for next week and cover it in more detail. Okay, meanwhile, okay, next. Okay, meanwhile, okay, next item on the agenda, which probably no one saw because it's not in front of you on your, the desks. Is a discussion of the board's membership. I added that on. For a particular reason. Marcelo?
Should I, okay. So, um, just for, for the members of the board, I, I, I mentioned this to, to Peter and Alvaro and 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 Tricia. Uh, the, my, the, the, uh, outlook for my work this year has changed, uh. And and it's, it's gonna make it really impossible for me to have the time to go to the planning board, so I, I am stepping down from the planning board. Um, and I was, uh, hoping and, uh, checking with Peter to make sure that there, there was. Uh, that, that I would not kind of impact any of the, of, of the applications that are ongoing, uh, fortunately, we have not had. One started that, that, that I am part of, so, so it, it seems like a good time for. For, um, any new member to, to be able to take on any new application from the beginning, which would be the best way. Um, so, uh, I was waiting for, for this minute to see, I think the last one I was involved in was this Dog Park. Um, special permit, and I wanted to make sure, Peter, you have to tell me if, um, if there's anything. Or any other application that, that, that I am part of, that, that, that is still pending. Uh, in that case, I, 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 I'd be happy to, to finish it.
No, with that Marcelo, I can say that there's no pending application, because Dog Park was the last one, so I think.
Okay.
You are cleared of.
Okay.
Clear, clear for takeoff.
Okay, so, uh, it's, it's ironic, I mean, today, exactly today, Max, like three years, that for my first meeting. And and it's been, uh, a great pleasure to collaborate with all of you, um, and all the different type of projects, uh. Because, because i- i- it was very nice to see that everybody has the same objective to just make the town better and and help what, in what we can. To improve the, the character of the town and and the well-being of everybody, so I, I, it's been a great pleasure for me, so I want to thank everybody for that time.
Well, obviously, we're going to, we are going to miss you on the planning board. But I did wanna go through, um, because he has not officially resigned yet, and I had asked him to. This is, again, just came up over the holidays, it's a very eventful kind of time, these last few weeks. But I asked Marcelo definitely to hold off on, uh, and officially resigning so that we could understand what, um. What's the best, you know, course of action, uh, moving forward. So there are some regulations on that, so and Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, um, but, um. As soon as. As soon as, uh, Marcelo would hand in a resignation letter, right, and that, that would be, that is, the vacancy is declared. Uh, we would have forty-five days between the planning board and the select board. To, to fill that seat.
Correct, that's all, so to fill the seat would, would be, uh, a joint vote of the planning board and the select board. We, we do have forty-five days, and then whoever takes that seat remains in that seat. And then at this upcoming, uh, election cycle in May could therefore run for Mars, the remaining years of Marcelo's seat. Marcelo, I believe, has two years left on his seat. Um, and then, uh, this upcoming year, I believe, will be Kate, you will be up the, you're going to have to rerun for your seat, so. Um, so theoretically on the ballot, there'll be two seats, one will be for a five-year term, one will be for a two-year. So if, if whoever is, gets, if somebody's interested in Marcelo's seat. Um, and and obviously, I think, you know, normally the town puts out a post in, in to try to collect talent bank forms. Um, and then kind of goes to kind of an interview process with the planning board and the select board. Whoever does kind of get into that seat or take that seat, then would have to re, will run, obviously, for the remaining years. Uh, of the seat.
Yeah, so we have, um, if Marcelo submitted his resignation within a hundred days of the election cycle. Then we, then we do not appoint anyone, we wait out the hundred days for the election, basically, is that right, Peter?
I would have to look at it again, but I, I, but I believe, I, um, I believe that that is correct.
Yeah, um, they went through this recently on school committee, so I have kind of a cheat sheet here. So, but if he, I mean, and. I think he's, at, at this point, now that, now that everything he's done is complete. Um, which is why I was asking you to just, you know, hold on till we get the dog park done, so that we don't have to repost or anything like that, um. That, um, like I said, once he turns in a resignation, um, we'll have forty-five days. To, to fill that seat in a joint select board, planning board, in that we have to, um. Post the vacancy, a select board must give notice of the vacancy at least fourteen days prior to the appointment. Typically, we like to do it a lot more than that, we like to post it. Make sure it's out there for people to be able to apply for the position, obviously, it's just a, a few months' position. Um, but it might give someone a taste of being on the planning board before they decide to run, and really in the same way Marcelo did, right? He.
Yeah, that's exactly how it.
Oh, and and you too, Deepa? You ran for like just a short time?
Yeah, I stepped into Joe's role. And then, um.
I think that's correct.
Yeah, I joined in August and then the following year, right?
Okay, so you had a little bit more time.
Yeah.
I think Joe's, I mean, Deepa stepped into Joe's role and I believe.
No, Marcelo slept in, because Joe stepped out in like November.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought, was, was it?
Phil Williams.
Yeah, Phil Williams, maybe. Yeah.
Dale, the Dale thing?
I think.
I interviewed after whoever was there left, so I don't know who that was.
So.
Work with the, um, associate member, like, I, I know that there's a process, so we, we can't, um, if. We can't just slide in an associate member per se, but is that, how does that all work?
I don't think you can just slide the associate member in.
Right.
But Amanda, if she wanted to, she could. She could apply for that posi, for the, you know, for the, that position.
Of course.
That would then open up her associate position.
Yes.
But in either case, you know, whether she, either, in either case, she could run for this, for the open position when it comes.
Yeah.
If she stays in her associate position seat and she does not. Win at the election, if she had decided to run, she would just slop, she would stay in her associate sheet, doesn't, she doesn't have to abandon the associate seat. To run for the.
Oh, okay.
I don't think, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure, um, that's, that, that you don't need to give up one seat to, because that, because her term is ongoing, right?
Well, it's. It's still an appointment, though.
I think it's a three-year term, the associate seat, right?
Yeah, I think I'm through May of twenty twenty-six.
Yeah. So. So that would be Amanda giving that some thought too, about what, if, if she wants to stay where she is, or if she wants to make a change.
I could put you on my wheel, I mean.
Yeah. Does it come with an endowment?
No.
Okay, um, so it's. The appointment and then running immediately this May is what we're saying.
Yes, because, yeah, because any appointments. Um, just get you to the next election.
Election cycle, got it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And and she or whoever applies would be running for, which is the remainder of my original term, the last two years.
Well, yeah, so there'll be, like, like Peter said, there'll be two seats up, a five-year seat and a two-year seat. You know, so anyone, you know, Kate could say, you know, I'm done, I went two years, I'm running for the two-year seat. You know, um, you don't, there's no names on those seats. So, um.
Okay.
But the two-year seat tends to be a little bit of a nice test for someone to see if, you know. They wanna stay longer, so.
I will have to talk to those of you who have run for. Seat in town, as to what that entails.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to answer any, uh, questions, so, so I think the question to the board, I mean, it's, it's totally up to Marcelo. Marcelo, I think you, I had told you that as soon as like. Basically, you'll need your signature on one of those, the dog park special permit, but other than that, um. I don't think there's, I don't think there's anything outstanding, and Peter kind of confirmed that there's, there's just nothing outstanding that you need to do.
Okay, then that seems like a good timing then.
Okay.
I'll, I'll sign this decision that we just voted on and, um, and also made my resignation to, to the town clerk. And, uh, it will be basically effective immediately so that you can start the process of opening that position, right?
Yeah, the unfortunate part is that we won't get to see you in another meeting, and the fortunate part, I know, it's like I'm not happy about it.
I, I, I may.
We're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
We know where you live and someone's got your phone number, right?
And you've got to celebrate that once Clover opens, so.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, that's a good idea, yeah.
So we still have opportunities to meet, you have to see your projects complete, Marcelo, you can't just, don't hope to disappear like that, that fast.
I always pay attention, don't worry about it, but I am all for celebration for sure.
But in that case, in that case, that would give us the maximum amount of time to, we don't have to wait forty-five days. It would give us the maximum amount of time to, um, post the position.
Yeah.
And maybe in thirty days, you know, get someone in, um, so, uh. More, so they would have more time to, um, learn about the seat versus that we have something big that on our agenda, but. Those are just kind of the pluses and minuses, I guess. So.
Okay.
All right.
So I'll, I'll do it that way then.
Everyone think that's a? Good.
I mean, I, no, I don't think we get to vote on him leaving, because we know how we vote.
We, we don't, that's right, I can entertain a motion of whether Marcelo should leave or not.
That's right.
Okay, so, um. And then we just have updates, oh, I guess we do have some wonderful meeting minutes, you're not off the hook yet, Marcelo, we got meeting minutes.
I did read them, yeah.
I read them too, they're pretty good, I thought.
I, I thought so too.
Um, but first, was there any updates about anything that we need to do, um? Obviously, with Design Review Committee, we're gonna be looking for, the, the committee is getting a little light, you know, at this point. So we'll have to think about that, oh, Marcelo's gonna be available. Design Review Committee. Um, but is there any other, there's any updates that we need to talk about tonight?
I just wanted to note that, I think everyone may have heard in the news, but yesterday, the SJC ruled an upheld MBTA zoning. Uh, and that is referred to in the Milton case, um, how the Attorney General, um. Uh, the Attorney General filed out suit against Milton, so the SJC in theory, um. Constitutionalized, right, um, MBTA zoning stating that, 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 the, the state and the legislation of law is constitutional. However, she did roll back stating that the regulations did not meet requirements. Uh, and so therefore, the, the state is gonna have to go back and through and issue, um, new guidelines. Obviously, I don't think the guidelines are gonna change, however, it's just gonna be a procedural matter. And there was an article in the Globe, and I think, uh, Governor Healy already kind of made note that. This week or into tomorrow, she would issue emergency regulations to kind of get over this, this hump. So I think, um, obviously, Ashland's a good standing, we have applied our, we've, we've sent all material in for, for compliance. Uh, that's kind of what to make note, obviously, that came up in the news, and if you haven't heard about it, please, you know, I have some information on it. Um, if you're curious, so that's all I had.
So, so the whole of the state is suing the town of Milford?
Milton, the town, the state, about a year and a half ago, uh, because Milton rejected MBTA zoning. Um, the Attorney General litigated, um, and filed suit that, that, that mandated Milton to.
Oh, okay.
Um. Comply.
But that's not gonna happen to Ashland, I mean, now we're just safe then.
Nope, right now, our, we're safe, we're not gonna face, face anything, um, but some communities did not do anything, right?
Yeah.
Uh, and so, it really stays, says to communities that did not go through an adoption process, right? Um, that, no, you have to do this, you don't have a choice, I mean, and, and. If you do not, the state then legally has the ability to enforce this upon you, and so. Um, but Ashland's a good standing, we have nothing to worry about, um, and and we're just kind of waiting to hear back on, on the review process. From the state and the Attorney General. So, uh, that's all I had, I'm sorry.
Okay, who want me to take care of meeting minutes, uh, we have December fifth and December nineteenth. Except, I, I thought they looked pretty good to me, um, pretty complete and well-written, I didn't have any changes.
Yeah, neither do I.
Can we do them together? Everyone ready for a motion or doing?
I think so.
Uh, any other comments? They were actually good, I think, um, easy. Um, I make a motion that we accept the December nine, December fifth and December nineteenth meeting minutes as written.
My second. Okay, Marcelo? And a roll call vote?
Deepa, I can die.
Marcelo, hona, I.
Catherine, Jersey guy.
And Tricia can die, so. Those are accepted. And. No. That's it, if anyone. Has anything else? All right, then I will make a motion to adjourn at nine oh three, is there a second?
Second.
And a roll call vote?
Deepa, I can die.
Marcelo, hona, I.
Catherine, Jersey guy.
Amanda, his eye.
And Tricia Kendall, I. Thank you, Marcelo, we'll see you around.
Around, everybody, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, have a great night.